Are you ready?
She is ready.
Are you going to razzle-dazzle without Kevin here?
Good evening. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of Tuesday, December 17, 2019. In accordance with provisions of MGL Chapter 38, Section 20, notice is hereby given that the Select Board will meet tonight, Tuesday, December 17, 2019, at 7:00 PM in Room 124, 1 Liberty Lane in Norfolk. Please be advised this meeting is being audio and video recorded for the open meeting laws of Massachusetts. At this time, I would ask you all to stand and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This evening, I am joined by my co-Select person, C.C. Van Dyne.
So fancy.
Our Town Administrator, Blythe Robinson, and our Executive Secretary, Judith Lozaro. Welcome. At this time, we are going to have the public comment, and after that, our Town Administrator will run us through the agenda. So would anybody like to speak at the public comment period? Ed? Ed, why don't you sit up at the table?
Okay.
State your name and...
Ed Head, 138 Red Maple Drive. This week, I had a meeting with Blythe and Todd. I had requested some time to go through the budget process, which they... And I just wanted to publicly thank them again. They were very generous with their time. They gave me a lot of information, and it was very, very well appreciated. Thank you very much. I just want to thank you again.
Thank you.
I like public comments like that.
Yes.
I could have a whole meeting like that.
Mr. Rosenberg, come on up.
I am David Rosenberg, 123 North Street. This will be extremely flat fast. I just want to encourage the selectmen to work on enhancing citizen engagement in town government now that we are over the thrust of the town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with any public comment? Okay. Blythe, would you mind running us through our action items for this evening?
Sure. For action items, we would like the Board to consider adopting the Attorney General's Regulations regarding allowing remote participation in public meetings by the various boards of the town. We have two discussion items, which are to discuss parameters for the FY '21 Town Operating Budget, and Mr. Terrio is here to continue the discussion with the Board about funding for a possible 150th anniversary parade for the town upcoming in 2020. We have three warrants to be approved, and lots and lots of minutes, some in open session and some in executive session.
Thank you very much. Would you like to discuss with us a little bit about adopting Regulation 940 CMR 29.10?
Sure. So this was brought forward first by Mr. Rosenberg, and it is a section of the state's Code of Regulations that allows, in some circumstances, boards to have someone who might have difficulty being able to attend a meeting, be able to participate remotely. They can participate in various manners. It can be just by audio, a video conference, and the information in your book goes over how that's done and what the rules are. The state recognizes the executive... The Select Board is the executive body of the town, and they're the ones that can adopt this regulation, and they are also the ones that if for some reason, a future date, you want to stop allowing it, they're the board to withdraw that as well. I think the information is pretty self-explanatory. The minimum requirements, I think, are important to point out that there needs to be a quorum of the body present at the meeting, and the chair or in the chair's absence, like tonight, there is a person... The person chairing the meeting has to be physically present. They can't be participating remotely. The people who are at the meeting and the person who is not need to all be able to hear each other throughout the meeting, and all the votes must be done by a roll call vote during that process. And the information goes into how the public can participate. And so we include also the actual CMR from the state, and I would also point out that we had a member of the Town Government Study Committee, former Town Government Study Committee member and Advisory Committee member, also had written to us after this came up at a meeting, interested in the Board accepting the rules. So if you were to approve it tonight, we would send out information to all of our other boards and let them know that it's now available to them. In each of the meeting rooms here at Town Hall, we have the telephone, like you want to see, to do this left, here downstairs in G 07 and up in 204. And so for now, that would be the vehicle by which people could participate remotely. We don't have video conferencing available. We would need to work on how to accomplish that, if that's of interest in the future, and there would be some expense, so I don't have any details for you right now.
Great. I will note that Kevin Calcutta is not participating remotely tonight. He is actually home, recovering from ACL surgery, so we wish him the best, but he is not participating remotely. Comments?
So I guess more a question. So assuming that it becomes that we accept or adopt it, is there any additional expense? Now, I understand that you were saying we can do it with the phone, and if people want, we can convert to video conferencing, but we don't... Is there a mandate that we have to...
No mandate. It's just a method you can use. In our case, we don't have that set up, so we would have to find out what it would cost to make that available, or are we able to put up some type of a Skype or some other type of service in its place? We haven't had a lot of time to look into that yet, but I'd say for now, people could use the telephone, kind of the old-fashioned way, and we can find out what it would cost, and then we can make a decision about whether we want to invest in that.
So that would be my next question, was that it would then... There would still then be the process if it's adopted and everybody... People start to make rumblings about wanting to see as well as hear. It can be something that's determined later on whether or not we want to expend money or not.
Correct.
They're not intertwined.
Correct.
What are some of the downsides to do it? Because I see, David, you and I have been talking about involvement, voter involvement, for 10 or more years, long time. So I know many of the upsides to this, but I'd love to hear, you know, what are some of the downsides that I'm not... Because obviously, I go cost initially, but once I hear that that's not an issue... I don't... I hear the Mr. Chair, there's somebody wagging their hand.
Couple of people wagging their hands. Well, I want to give you the opportunity first.
So that's my question, is I don't have the answer to that. That would just be something I'd be interested in knowing, because I can certainly see the upside. I'm just curious what's downside.
David, do you want to first?
So during the time that this has been under discussion, I've heard one objection, and that objection was that it might encourage people to be lazy and to not come to meetings when they should, and sort of to, you know, lie back in bed or under the sun or in the pool or something and participate remotely. I will point out that the Attorney General's Regulations, first of all, encourages people to attend meetings if at all possible, and older version of the regs enumerated various reasons that they might participate remotely. The current version of the regs removed the list of reasons and just said that the only reason is if it's unreasonably difficult to attend, and it didn't define... The current regs don't define what unreasonably difficult means. But anyway, the only objection I've heard is that people will take advantage of it to be lazy.
Ed?
I think I read about this, and I thought what I had read was the issue about voting, that voting was not allowed as a remote participant, that you could participate, but you couldn't vote. I just wanted to clarify that, because that's certainly if there's exhibits or presentations being made, I don't know if that the person who's remote might have access to them and then votes on them. So I guess the question of voting is what my question is. Can they vote?
Per the state's Open Meeting Law Guide, it says all votes taken during a meeting in which a member participates remotely must be by a roll call vote. So they can vote, but I think you're... The point about the fact that if there's an item being discussed that's being shown on the screen and they don't have... They didn't receive that ahead of time, they might be somewhat hampered in being fully involved in the conversation if video isn't available. I mean, I don't... I mean, our Board certainly puts out most... Almost everything in advance. I don't know if every Board does.
Excuse me, I can't hear when there's... It's bad hearing. I just can only hear one person talking. Sorry.
There's... There might be a situation where somebody doesn't have all the information in front of them or can't see what everyone is seeing if they're on the phone.
That's a good point.
David, were you going to say something or no?
I don't have any more answer to the question. I have more reasons about why I think this is a good thing. I don't... I don't know if you want to hear that now.
Sure. If you want to tell us, go ahead.
So we have a difficult time filling a lot of committees. This is... We have volunteer, part-time, unpaid assignments. We're asking people to make a commitment of their time, which is limited, and the more obstacles that we put in their way, the more attrition we have from committees. I think in the case of Kristen, who is the Town Study Committee and now Advisory Board Member, who wrote the letter, her concern was that her husband wasn't available to take care of her children. She was home. She couldn't abandon her children at home. She didn't want to bring young children to the meeting, and that if she put them to bed, and then she could participate remotely from home and still be at home in case any issue arose. There are other people who... See, as I recall, at one point, C.C. had an injury to her leg from bicycling or something and was unable to attend meetings. So there are situations of physical disability or temporarily physical disability, for example, Kevin this evening, and if remote participation was available and, you know, those people wanted to participate, they could. There's also the case that sometimes people are feeling ill and don't want to come to a meeting not only to protect themselves, but to protect other committee members from being coughed on or getting germs, and so it's possible to participate remotely to protect other committee members. And there is a situation that sometimes people are on business travel and are unable to participate because, say, they're out of state, or even they're in Boston and can't get back to Norfolk in time for a meeting, but they could pick up a phone and participate remotely. So I basically see it as a way of making it easier for people to participate in town government, to remove obstacles that are potentially discouraging to people who might otherwise volunteer to work on boards or committees.
Thank you. I look at it from a different standpoint and a couple of different areas. One is I never like to bring it up, but I have difficult hearing. Conference calls are horrendous for me. I can't, because of background noise, community lines or whatever you want to call them, conference calls, don't work well for me. I have a real tough time. So I've either got to sit there and pretend that I understand everything, everyone's going to nod my head, or I've got to keep asking the question, "Could you repeat that? Could you repeat that?" So that makes it very difficult for me, and that's one of the obstacles I see, is we don't have a good TTY system here. And I certainly am not going to encourage the town to get a special device so I can sit here with a headset, so I can hear properly. I have never done it in my life. I've survived 59 years. I expect to survive longer that way. So that's my first obstacle, is the fact that my hearing would definitely be impaired by this method, and I don't want to see us have to... Unless we went to video or some kind of video system, I think it would be very difficult. So that's my first obstacle. My second is, and I think you participate in town government, and so have you, is I think there's something to be said about participating in town government. You have to make a commitment, and as you and I both know, it isn't just the two hours we sit here twice a month. It is the hours we spend outside of this room as well, and it's a huge commitment. And I think people should be recognized when they sit in this room, whether... No matter what group they're on, that they're giving that commitment to the town. And I realize that people have business trips. I realize people might be sick. They might have an injury. You know, those are the rare. I mean, we don't have too many of those, and I think if there's ever a vote that is so critical that if Kevin couldn't be here or if C.C. had went... Shattered leg, we could postpone that. So I don't think... And I think the idea that I don't feel real well, or... Which is easy to say, if, you know, "I got home late last night. I don't feel well today," or my kids, I can't find... You know, babysitting, there's plenty of ways to find babysitters. I just think it certainly makes it easier for people to step away and say, "Ah." Or maybe it's a vote that I'm not so comfortable with, so it's a lot easier doing it from home instead of facing the audience and facing the people who are coming before us. Those are the problems I have with it. I think that they... I think it's... There's a definite... There's a reason we participate. There's a commitment we give to participating. And, you know, if I had... I mean, like in Kevin's case, if I had three children, it would be very difficult for me to participate on a board, so I give him a lot of credit for participating.
Doesn't give me credit for my three kids. I have three kids, two. Where's my credit?
I thought you had four.
I do have four, but at least three.
He has three. You have four. Yours are older.
The younger ones are in sixth grade. I should get them.
But, you know, it's very difficult, and I think it's just to your point, it's difficult. And I think you make a commitment. I think that commitment has to be in a physical form. I think when you start going to remote, what's going to be next? And, you know, you've got a ZBA board where we have five members, so alls we need is three. So two people could say, "Ah, I don't feel like coming tonight." And so they're going to participate remotely. I just think we're going to weaken the system, and I think the system works. It's worked for many years. I think getting... As we see with the folks from Rivers Edge, it's getting people wanting to get involved in town government, wanting to know the issues, and participate. I think that's what we've got to work on. I don't know if remote's going to encourage people to participate, or is it going to allow the existing members to just sometimes say, "Ah, I don't want to go there tonight," or "I don't want to be there," and those are my concerns. I also have concerns that Kevin is not here tonight, and I'm almost at a point that I would move that we actually delay this vote.
Okay.
Till we have a full Board, so that we have three of us here, and we can talk about it a little more, talk about some of the pros, and we can discuss some of the cons. And like I said, I don't really want to discuss the TTY issues, because I just bring it to everyone's attention. I may not be the only one.
Sure.
Who has a hearing difficulty. We don't walk around saying, "Can't hear," but I think there are people, and it becomes difficult, and I have it with cell phones. I have it with... And I certainly have it with conference calls.
I can't hear with background noise.
Yeah.
If there's anything going on.
Yeah. And that's a big issue for me, so... I mean, I think if there's more comments, great, but it's my feeling that maybe we should postpone this vote, give it a little time to think about it, give Kevin a chance to weigh in at our next meeting and discuss it then.
Okay.
Is there any other comments from the audience? David?
So I guess I'd ask you to think about whether you would prefer that someone participate remotely or that they not participate at all. I mean, so for example, in Kristen's case, she needed to be home with her children, and so what she did is not attend that meeting. And I think the AG's regulations are really pretty clear that people should attend if they can and only use remote participation if attending would be unreasonably difficult. And so I see the choice as dropping out of at least that meeting, possibly dropping out of the Board, but dropping out of at least that meeting or participating remotely.
Hi. I'll wait till the hands are done.
Go ahead. Paul.
Paul, Denver, 16 Winterbury. I wonder whether there's any history in other jurisdictions of participation remotely in different types of public fora. It may be that other states have adopted these regulations before and that there are some studies out there that show what happens to participation when people can remotely engage, and maybe a search would result in some interesting information in that regard. In fact, the Attorney General may have done that work before promulgating the regulation.
Do we know anything yet, Blythe, with regard to our neighboring towns or...
I haven't... I mean, I can put out an email to my counterparts and say, "Hey, who's adopted and who hasn't," but it's a very... It's a town-by-town preference.
No, I completely understand that, but if there are 10 towns that have done it, maybe they have a history that they can share, or even towns in other states, in New England, for example. So they don't have to search universally to find out whether New Hampshire towns do this kind of thing. I mean, there are quite a number of people who can't come because of disabilities, for example, or because of weather conditions even, and for a variety of other reasons. And I imagine many towns have done... Have adopted similar approaches to encourage participation for those people.
I'm happy to reach out to, you know, the managers I know in the area and ask them in certain... I mean, I can do a Google search about other states, but I don't know managers necessarily in other states. I could call and say, "Hey, how's this working for you?"
Yeah. Yeah. Go ahead, Paul. Microphone?
Paul Terrio, 57 Rockwood Road. So I'm wondering if this opens like a Pandora's Box with regards to the meetings. As a member of the CPC, sometimes we have sensitive votes, and to what degree is each committee held responsible for making their votes known? And to what degree is the town held responsible for creating the...
Minutes, right? Yeah. It's a roll call.
The environment for people to vote or to participate remotely? And have you looked at what happens if somebody says, "Well, I couldn't get on. You guys voted without me." So... And say they were a critical swing vote, does that invalidate? Does that open up other areas where now the vote's now held in question and things of that nature?
Well, the regulations, as I read them and what's included in the Selectman's packet, is that if there becomes at some point in the meeting, something happens with, say, the phone call and that person is dropped, they suggest that you need to stop the meeting or make sure that the meeting can be re-engaged with that person on the phone before you continue. I mean, I think you have to use kind of some common sense about if that person isn't available, then you've got to address that. In terms of the actual votes, that's going to be recorded in the minutes, so the clerk of the Board is going to be responsible for recording that roll call vote. No difference if they were here.
Go ahead, David.
So I haven't attended other towns' meetings. I basically focus on Norfolk, but I have attended meetings of some statewide boards that have... The open meeting law applies, and the remote participation applies to municipal bodies, regional bodies, and statewide bodies, and I can report from personal experience that it has been helpful to the statewide bodies whose meetings I've attended who have used remote participation. It allows people who can't get there to partake in the discussion. And with respect to the point about people who might be a swing vote and were unable to vote because of some problem, my comment is it's better that they can vote most of the time than if they don't attend the meeting, which is basically the alternative. I mean, the only time somebody should be using remote participation is if it's unreasonably difficult for them to attend the meeting. And so if the choice is the person can't vote because he can't get to the meeting and there isn't remote participation, or that he can vote if, you know, if remote participation is in use, I would say that I hopefully very small fraction where there's... Of times when there's some kind of technical problem is insignificant compared to the fact that you can get remote participation. The person can vote remotely, the majority of the... The vast majority of the time, he's participating remotely.
Okay. C.C., do you have one more thing to say?
I think since we're going to be holding off until Kevin's involved, I think we can sort of have a larger, more, you know... I don't want to beat the drum twice, lazy like that, so...
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Ed? Oh, we have two.
I tried.
I think just a last comment from me about the voting. Because someone isn't here physically, you really don't know whether they're fully participating or not. They could have gone to get a beer out of the refrigerator when some very important issue came up. You just don't know. So to me, the issue is voting. I like the idea that they participate, because I think it's helpful for someone to... For continuity of a member to a Board to keep hearing discussions, but I'm just concerned about voting. That's my... Would be my concern.
One more comment. Sure. State your name.
Thank you. Howard Rand, 101 Red Maple. First of all, if there are state agencies, give the names to the Town Administrator. Let her give them a call. Secondly, just because they have it doesn't mean they're happy with it. And thirdly, if you have participation, you have no control. You can have 100 people talking at the same time, depending on the system, so how are you going to control anything or know what's what? So it can be ridiculous, but seeing what other towns are doing and seeing if they're happy or whatever at least gives us a general idea.
Good. All right. So I would move that the Board delay the vote on the Attorney General's Regulation 940 CMR 299.10 to permit... Promote participation in public meetings until a future meeting. What's our next meeting in January?
January 7.
Till January 7, 2020.
I guess I got to second that, even though I'm also going to be the other vote.
Yes.
It's weird. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I like the idea of having Kevin here. I think that's a good idea.
Okay, great. Okay. Our next item is parameters for the FY '21 Town Operating Budget. Blythe?
So I'd like to invite Todd up to the table for this, because this is something we've both been working on. Forgive me for not being fully up to speed on exactly how the budget's been handled in the past, but it occurred to me that it's helpful to everyone to have an understanding of what is... What the town's finances look like and what is, if for lack of a better word, affordable in the future. So that's really what this spreadsheet is about that's in your packet. Thanks to Todd, what we've provided for you is four years of history, FY '16 through '19, the current FY '20 budget, and then what we're projecting now without... With assumptions and not all the information, what we think FY '21 looks like. And so you've got the revenues in blue at the top. You've got in yellow in the middle what we consider our fixed costs, and then at the bottom, what our more discretionary costs were. What my challenge was to Todd was to, based on history and what we believe is going to happen in the future, please project out what revenue growth there's going to be, what some of the increases might be in our fixed costs, and then what, in order to bring home a balanced budget, if all of this came true, what would that result in? And the answer to that is the town... Both town and school, we could achieve a balanced budget with a 3.07% increase in our costs for next year. Now, we don't know what state aid's going to bring. We don't know if we can... If there's any approvals to local receipts that we might increase user charges or such for, that we could increase there. And we hope that some of the fixed costs don't come to bear the way they are. Last year, we actually were able to reduce our health insurance line. You know, hopefully this year, we'll be able to keep it in check, but right now, for... To be conservative, we've... be conservative, we've increased it 5%. So, I wanted to start the conversation with the board about what your, show this to you and get your input. Start to talk about what priorities you might have for next year and suggest that tonight's just a discussion. I think it would be helpful, I've shared this with our departments, so they have an early understanding, so this isn't set in stone, but you need to understand where things are coming from. And I think it would be helpful to engage our two school districts, our, you know, King Philip and Norfolk Schools, in what this looks like because I would think it would be helpful not to have them have a false expectation of what they could submit to us. Two other caveats, one, you know, this will not be a simple exercise because across our organization, we have employee union contracts going up anywhere between 3% and 4%, and the schools are about to, are in negotiations for a successor contract right now, and so we don't know what that means. So that's important to point out. And this is simply the operating budget. This does not provide any dollars for capital. And we certainly talked about how that's something we're going to have to focus on in the future. I'll also say this isn't any harder or easier than any other budget year, I'm sure. You know, there's a limited amount the town can raise taxes and find other revenue sources. And if you start to take away all the things we can't control, it's hard to affect a real change. So, it's a, that's an overview. Todd, do you have any thoughts about that you'd like to share?
Again, just to get your feedback on the preliminary, because at this point, what happens now, memo goes out to all the department heads from my office and Blythe, letting them know what we anticipate for the upcoming budget season, asking for their requests on the budget. Want to do a little bit differently, try and make it a little bit more informative this year, mission statements from each of the departments, maybe even diagram of personnel within the departments themselves, along with the different requests that they're looking for. And put that all together like we've done in the years past where, you know, we build the budget and we start to have meetings either with the select board, the advisory board. In years past, we always kind of had the advisory board, a select person would come to the advisory board because the department head would give their presentation at the one meeting. Logistically, it just worked best that way. We can do it any number of ways, but that's kind of like what the next methodology is thanks for the process as we go through the budget season, which is, you know, a four-month process, five-month process.
So, I heard you say that you'd sent this to the department heads already?
We had a department head meeting last Wednesday and we handed it out and said, this is what it's starting to look like, but the selectmen need to weigh in on what their priorities are.
And I'm hearing you say you haven't heard any, you don't have any feedback yet, so I'm not, because you're going to then circle back with them, so I'm not going to be hearing anything about, you know, this line item X says, you know, $1,112,000, but Joe has informed us that our boiler is about to explode and it needs to be, right, like, we don't have any of that information.
We haven't asked them to turn their budgets in yet, but if the, if the, if the feedback from the board was, you know, please bring us a 3% budget, then Todd and I, working with the departments, are going to have to incentivize them, challenge them, ask a lot of questions, and figure out there might be a budget that needs to go up a little higher and there might be a budget that's a little lower, but at the end of the day, we're going to provide you with a budget recommendation that we think meets your, meets your goals and is balanced for you and the advisory committee to then, you know, debate and prepare to bring to town meeting. And we certainly are going to try to find, you know, I'm going to challenge departments, is there, you know, have you thought about ways you could perform your work differently that might be more efficient? Are there revenues you haven't looked at in a few years that we should reconsider the fees that we charge? Is there a more cost-effective way to do your work that you'd like to explore? And really, for me, this is the first time through all these budgets, I mean, I understand them, but I haven't sat down and said,
In our town.
Talk to me about your office supply budget. Talk to me about the way you purchase this or that, or why you have this many people assigned to do this work. I'm going to get into that level of detail. So, A, I understand it, and B, we can answer your questions about why is something the way it is. For example, the police station, when the budget was put together to run that building, it was based on estimates from engineers and the architects about what things would cost. That building fully runs on electricity, not natural gas, not oil, and it's running at about $4,000 a month. That's more than what we planned, so we're going to have to look at what that budget is for next year, and we're going to have to figure out if we have to adjust somewhere else to account for that. That's a cost we can't just say, oh, we're not going to turn on all the lights, we're not going to, we're going to just turn the thermostat down to X. Maybe there's a little, some of that can be done, but for the most part, that's a cost. It's hard to just say, sorry, we're not going to do that.
I'll talk to Andy Bakunowski, he'll be going through there.
So, I mean, those are the sorts of things we're going to worry about at the granular level, and we're here really to talk to you at the more macro level about where do you want to go? If it is we don't want to see a 2.5% tax increase because it's allowed under state law, then that sends a very different message to everyone. Maybe we're in a year where we're retrenching, and what does that mean? So, again, this is big picture, but we at least wanted you to know what it looks like if all of these things came true. And certainly, our goal is to effect change so that it's the lowest increase it needs to be to do the work of the town and provide services people expect.
And so, again, I'm hearing, I just want to make sure that I'm clear with what I'm looking at. Now, but the budget has also not been, or this schematic, this sort of early inculcation of the budget has not been presented to King Philip or Norfolk Elementary School.
I have, I have, so the
Or engendered any feedback?
No feedback.
Like, nobody's looked at it and said, 12, 753, no way it's going to be 15 million.
So both of the superintents are invited to those department head meetings, only Superintendent Alardi was able to come last week, so she received it at the meeting, and Superintendent Zinni wasn't able to come, but I did send it to him and say, hey, the selectmen haven't talked about it yet. I'm going to ask, suggest to them that we gather your feedback, but here's what, this is simple math, not any, it's not personal in any way or directed at any particular order department, but this is straight math is what it looks like today. You may, I want you to be aware of that. We can't, we can't garner more new growth or assume an override at this point.
No.
No, we can't. So, here we are, we gave $951 to the good if this all came true, and hopefully, they can take that in stride and be able to say back to you, well, this is what, you know, we're having X number of new students, or we figured out a better way to do X or Y, and 3% is something we can achieve, or here's why we can't, and at least you can know that. Because at the end of the day, we want to know what your priorities are as we put together a budget we put in front of town meeting.
So what happens, my last question, and then I'll turn over the mic to Chris. For now, my last question for this moment, right, I've never not stopped, start, ceased to talk, but what happens if the message back is that people, the taxpayers took a real hit when they opened their bills last January, and, which is why I sort of reacted to the override. I think most, I would like to think most people will assume that it's not an override kind of a vibe. What happens if the message back is that we're going to try to claw back the 2.5 growth? So that would then be what, like a .57 increase, right, as opposed to a 3.7 increase? What happens if that's the message back? Does everybody light their hair on fire and run around the building, or do they, what?
If you were, if you were to talk about
This is my first budget too, and I'm wondering, how do you keep people from being priced out of a town with one traffic light?
You start to talk about the level of services that you can provide when you are going to reduce your, you know, your increase by the difference between 30,715 and 32,41,000. Since the majority of our budgets across town and schools are payroll-related, you start to talk about how many pe, how many school employees you have, how many, you know, our largest department is police, how many people we have working, and it starts to get into response time for services, number of, you know, snowplows on the road, number of staff at town hall, library.
But we have those discussions, right?
You have those discussions.
Like, I'm just asking, just to play in the hypothetical. Hypothetically, Cece says, what happens if we all come in and pitch why we need the 2.5 increase, or, you know, the 3.07 as opposed to a .57? And then people come in and sort of pitch as opposed to sort of the sense that I think some people, myself included, had, is why I ran, of sort of a carte blanche, where it's just rubber stamped and it's spent. And it's not spent on, you know, gold-embossed, it's, but there's never any sense of, and I, I hearken back to when we were interviewing the fire chiefs, and the chief we selected talked about the year, a year or two before he left Dover where they did this, right? And then they all had to sort of claw back in how they handled that. Now, I'm not necessarily saying that that's what's going to happen. I'm one vote, and I'm just asking questions, but I would be open, and I think I'm not the only one who would be open to saying, all right, we have somewhere between 0 and 2.5. We've got a budget here of 2.5, but some people are talking about not 2.5. Come in, like, let's start having those conversations. And I understand what you were saying, right? I was on the advisory board. I know that most of that stuff takes place at the advisory board, you have a select person available, and maybe that's where it happens, or it happens here, or it happens elsewhere, but it's just, that's my question.
Well, you start to talk about the number of people you have in, have providing the services we provide and those services, and the impact of reductions. I mean, we can go back to unions try to reopen contracts, I can tell you
I understand we can't, there's certain things we
Well, you can, you can say, look, we either have to find a way to reduce our, these costs, or we need to talk about a reduction in force, and you go through that process as well. And I would, all I would suggest is whatever, if we're going to talk about, say, not an increase of 2.5%, then I just want to make sure that the, it's evenly, it's evenly distributed across
Right.
The organization and schools, that, if you look at the bottom of the chart, in the orange area, if you add up Norfolk Elementary and King Philip, that's 2/3 of the cost. So, you know, we could significantly reduce staff on the town side and it's not going to have
An impact.
All the impact, it was not going to achieve your outcome solely.
Candidly, I'll have, I'll be honest, and I'm sure there'll be people who will squawk at me, and I mean that in the nicest way possible, that you could mean the word squawk, I guess, but I'm certainly not of the opinion, as much as I'd love to see it not be that people aren't driven out of the town by high taxes, I also, you know, mindful of the fact that people ought not to get, you know, with pretty strong economy, laying people off doesn't seem like a great solution either. And I'm just curious if there are other solutions or, you know, what else is there out there? Because I am mindful of the fact that as in every year, the majority of our town's budget is schools, but, you know, the population is growing, at least in the, on the little kid side.
Right, the hard part is most of the items in the fixed cost area, we really can't affect as much as we'd like to. I mean, we are hopeful that we've had good experience in health insurance and that we won't, if we see an increase, it's small, and we had a meeting with our employee advisory committee yesterday to put an option on the table to incentivize people not to take our health insurance, to buy it elsewhere and to reduce our cost. That's a way we're trying to start to attack this now, so hopefully, that's an area we can economize on and we can focus to other areas. But in Norfolk County Retirement, that's, that's a fixed number
Right, that's a fixed number, right.
That they have to give us, and it is what it is.
Right, I get that, yep.
So, those are things that we can't change. That's, that's a big picture answer. Todd, do you have any thoughts to add to that, based on having done this a couple of years here than I haven't?
It's always a fun game to put all the pieces together, so get all the requests in from the departments, we do the master budget, and then we start to have the conversations with those departments, why do you need this, why, blah, 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 add them all up, and eventually get to a balanced budget.
The other thing I would point is, right now, this assumes we're using $233,000 of free cash, which, you know, which Norfolk has typically done. If you look at the whole spreadsheet, you'll know that overall, it's been going down, and that's a very good thing. I would like to get to the point where it's zero, because if that's the area where we're still going to be able to focus our, our capital expenditures, I don't want to spend any of it on the operating budget. I mean, it's a, ideally, it's a practice you don't continue. So, to, you know, as it sits today, we would use some of what we have left, about $650,000 is left through this year. In my world, I would like that to be zero so that we can deal with snow and ice overages if we need to, or we can plan to continue to spend money on roads or other capital in the fall.
So I lied, because I said it was my last question. Chris knows me well
Could ask as many as you like.
I know, but Chris knows me well enough that he smiled, he's like, yes, yes, you did. Wasn't there something that, that also, and there was some talk about it at town meeting as well, but you and I had a meeting about, mm, 10 months ago about, and I'm blanking on what the heck it is, so, but you know, because there was something you wanted to use free cash to fund that we were behind on funding that had something to do with retirement?
That would have been OPEB.
Yep. And is that well-funded now, or like, sort of, you've got your little, your plan, I don't mean to minimize it, but you had a plan?
So the plan was to start to fund the OPEB
Yep.
deficiency, which at the last town meeting, we put $25,000 towards that.
Right.
Which was on the transfer.
Is that, I mean, I know this isn't operating, but is that part of your budget to keep funding it?
We're going to have to incorporate that once we put all the requests in, in there, yes.
That isn't here at all? I mean, we've got a $21 million liability?
No, I understand that, but I also know that Todd had talked about, I really can't hear when people are talking in the audience, I apologize. Todd had been talking last year about at least creating a plan that puts something away towards it each year.
Right.
I was just curious if that was part of
It's not part of it, and there's no capital in here, so, you know, ideally, if we put $25,000 aside, next year, we double it, we just keep increasing it. You know, if, at some point, we could try to dedicate a revenue stream to it, some towns, say, have designated their restaurant receipts. It's not a lot.
I don't know that that would be the
It's not, I, I know it's
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
It's something, but again, it takes, that's right now in part of our local receipts, so it's taking it out of that bucket.
Right.
Putting a different one.
But that's why I was curious, because I know that it was important, and I know people had opined about it at town meeting, in addition to Todd speaking about it last year.
Yeah, I think for me, it's overall, creating some, you know, asking the hard questions this year and creating some discipline about what people, what is requested and what we really need, make sure that what we're asking for is what we really need, and making sure that, you know, in the future, we are being that disciplined every year so that the increases are not more than they need to, and looking at, looking at our employee contracts long term, and while we want to be competitive, we also don't need to be the one paying the most because it makes
Right.
budgets hard to achieve.
Good.
Now I'm done.
For now?
For now.
Okay. I'm going to echo your sentiments. You know, I think I would like to see this really either, I almost would like to see a zero-based budget. I mean, every department have to tell us what they're spending their money on, and a lot of it's easy because it's fixed and it's employee payroll, but all the non-employee payroll items have to be identified. I'd also like to see FY '20 actuals to date, plus what is their variables through the end of the year. Because I know, I know we always seem to have May and June, the warrant increases for a number of items that they'd like to make sure they get into their budget. Maybe this year, we don't, they don't get done this year, and we increase free cash. But at least we have an idea, what are their fixed costs and what are these variable costs that maybe don't need to be spent? So like, when the school gives back $100,000 and we all say, that's wonderful, maybe there was, maybe it was $300,000 and they spent $200,000 discretionary at the end of the year and give us back 100 because everybody feels good, but I'd like to know that.
Right, well, and don't forget, once, once that number is voted, that's, we can ask, but it's, it's completely theirs to determine how to spend.
But I'd like to see what it is, so that when we're looking at this next year's budget, I can say, okay,
Yep.
we gave you that, but guess what? I'm pulling it out next year. So more of a zero, more of a zero-based way of looking at it. So, more of a zero, more of a zero-based way of looking at it. And I would like to see a flat. Don't, don't, we're not gonna increase it two and a half percent. Folks, learn to, learn to live within your means, and if you can, instead of coming to the advisory board or to the Board of Selectmen saying, we need 6% or 9%, you know, don't waste everybody's time. Tell us why you, why, where you are today, you need a little more, as opposed to us always kicking it back. Tell them, show us what you've got now, and then tell us why you need it to go forward. And then we'll decide whether or not, or the advisory board, in combination with the Board of Selectmen, if we can afford to do that, or if we wanna do that. As you said, there's no capital in here. We've, we peep on, I think we all keep beating the drum on it, roads, 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 roads. We want our roads fixed. I think the taxpayers deserve it, they pay taxes. It's one of the services they, they, they should, they should expect, they're entitled to it. It shouldn't be a, and so I think we have to put as much towards that as we possibly can. We've talked about possibly some of the free cash from this last fall's town meeting to be used for the roads, if we can afford to do it. But we, and that, that, I think the plan was a $10 million plan by, presented by Barry to bring our roads up to snuff, $300,000 is just a drop in the bucket.
I understand.
So, we need to put more effort towards that. And I think we have to pull the reins in on, you know, looking at some of these budgets. The school's gonna be coming forward with their addition plan. I'm sure they're gonna be looking for money this spring. Uh, we have to, they have to understand that, you know, there's other things that are priority as well.
I think this spring, they will, they will be looking for the, they, for the board, and see if there's consensus among the board and the school committee about submitting what's called a statement of interest to the MSBA, to see if, to see if we can get into their program, to help, see if they'll pay for the portion of the expansion. If that takes place in April, we wouldn't hear until late summer. And so, if that happens, I think the earliest the school would be here to request funds to start design would be, um, next fall, not this spring. I think it'll take longer. If we don't get in the first time, then we have to determine whether we're gonna try again, or we're gonna figure it out without any MSBA's funding.
I mean, we have a $50 million capital wishlist that we, we talked about a couple of months ago. Uh, $951 doesn't get a cut in.
I, I understand.
Not gonna cut it. And increased borrowing means increased taxes, which is what we're trying to...
I think the reality is, if we're talking about no tax increase, no two and a half percent tax increase budget, then across the whole organization, you're talking about less people preferring services. And for, so for me, just for argument's sake, I'm talking about the police department, then we have to talk about, well, what does that mean? If we had, say, one less officer on each shift, how many people is that? What does that mean in terms of call-response time, follow-up, the sorts of things that we've come to expect, so we can make those decisions? And, and I, and I'm saying that without having the police contract in front of me and knowing what that actually would even allow. So, those are the conversations. So, we talk about zero-based budding, we, budgeting, we need to get down to that level of detail and say, we can achieve a zero budget, but this is what it means.
And I think, and I agree with you on that. And the hard part of that is, you can reduce fire, you can reduce police, you can reduce town government, you can reduce facilities, and it all becomes a drop in the bucket, because the school is two-thirds of the budget. But I think we have to do it at every department level, so that the school realizes we're doing it there as well. And I don't think, and so, yeah, right, it's not gonna make a big difference at these levels, the police, local, town government, but we have to do it at every level, so that the school is well aware that we need them to do it in earnest. And I think what I've seen in prior years is, it's not done that way. And they come in with 10%, and then they negotiate down to 3%, and everybody says, we've done a great job. I think we've gotta go the other way, and start with flat, and then say, okay, now, tell us what you need. And then we'll make that very hard decision in all departments, whether or not, you know, start selling cruisers, you know, and start doing other things, to, to make sure we have a balanced budget, and we can start to put money aside for our capital items.
Sure.
I think it's also, please forgive me if you already know this, when we talk about the King Philip budget, don't forget we're one of three towns. And so, two, whatever two towns pass, you know, that is the budget then the third town becomes obligated to. So, for instance, last year, Rentham and Plainville passed a lower budget than we did, and so we had about $65,000 that we redeployed at our fall town meeting that we were not able to pay them, because, you know, the budget approved was lower, so...
But, correct me if I'm wrong, we typically know that what the other towns are gonna do, at least...
Sure.
We have a general sense. Like, every year, we'll, they'll come in, and we'll get the, the pitch, and we'll, uh, commit the money, and we know that the other towns aren't gonna do it. And so, we're gonna know, I mean, I get what you're saying, I like it. Like, coming at it from a, alright, it's here, now tell us why it needs to be here. And maybe we'll get here, but we're gonna fight here, rather than starting here and then, and then coming down. We'll know, I think we'll have a sense, you know, right now, I think you have it in at, what, 8.9? 8.917?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we'll find, we'll probably have a, a good sense what it is that, say, Plainville is gonna, that's usually the...
And it doesn't mean we'll find it, that somebody, that somebody's budget's too high. We may, we've talked about it, that our DPW budget may be too low. You know, there may be budgets that, you know, they come in, and we go, this is crazy.
Well, and that's where...
This is, we, we've underfunded these people, wonder why they can't do the work we expect to be done. So, it works both ways, I think. But I think, yes, you're right, it is drilling down, it is not going to be easy. Um, I think I mentioned to you, is that we have eight select board meetings between now and town meeting. So, it doesn't give a lot of time...
Doesn't, doesn't.
...to do this. And so, it has to be a lot of participation, probably working groups. We probably have to participate in the advisory board meetings.
Yeah, go to the advisory meetings.
And vice versa.
Yeah, I, it would be helpful for me, trying to kind of lay out the process, so everyone knows what, or what we're trying to achieve, is whether you want the department heads to come here, or there, and we'll go to them, or we'll have joint meetings. That would be helpful for me to understand, so I can make sure everybody's on the same, on the same sheet of music. I like it. Not that I play anything.
What have you, Todd, in the past, what have you found as far as these sessions? Do you find it better for them to come to the Board of Selectmen with the advisory board? Or how do you find it works best?
Um, the advisory board having more members, it's easier to probably go to that board meeting than to come to, I'm not trying to belittle the select board at all, but, um, trying to get eight or nine members from the advisory board to come to here tends to be a little bit more difficult. If they have a scheduled meeting, they're gonna show up, one or two, one of you. Um, or posted, if you're gonna have two of you, if you're gonna be doing any debating or asking questions, probably be the simplest, logistically, I would think.
And is there a possibility of joint meetings? Because I mean, we've got some big budgets. Obviously, there's two school budgets, and then probably our, I think it's our public safety is next. You know, I would think that they should, maybe all those present to both boards? Or would they present to them individually? But I think it would be good for at least those three to be presenting to the Board of Selectmen as well, so that we're not just one member sitting at the advisory board, because we wouldn't be able to, we'd actually be observing, we wouldn't be participating, correct?
You could have both board mem, board meetings at the same night, same room.
Right.
Posted.
Yep.
And you just have the one department showing...
Well, let me talk to the, uh, the chair of advisory, and, and see if we can figure that out. I understand what you're saying. I understand the past, maybe, selectmen have also gone to a school committee meeting, because that's really where their work is of, of either King Philip or local, figuring out what they're gonna, what their priorities are, what they're gonna submit. Um, so there might be some value in that. Not that I'm trying to sign you up for lots of meetings, but...
No, but I think there's va, I think, I think Chris is correct, and you're correct, that there's value in going and getting the information in, in the, sort of the shoe leather approach, to make sure that it's not just a couple of meetings, and then it's presented, and we're like, oh, okay, sure, it looks fine, and sign off on it, that we're sort of involved earlier and, and more in-depth. But it does beg a question for me, so hypothetically, we send somebody to the advisory meetings, as we've done, they listen, they ask questions, as, as people who are, you know, members of the audience are allowed to do. Somebody goes to the, um, school committee meeting, maybe, you know, asks some pointed tough questions, and then they come back here, and then that select member is required to then present the information and then debate both. I, I just think that there's gonna be a gap in the, if we're gonna be voting as well on whether or not, or, you know, if we're gonna be taking some sort of a role, whatever that role is, that we haven't necessarily taken before, other than to say whether we're for or against a line item at town meeting. If we're going to be taking more of a, a role, I think we need to at least think about, and maybe come back on January 7th and talk more, but I think we need to think about how, what that looks like. Because otherwise, we're gonna send everybody out, and they're gonna come back and say, well, I went to the school committee meeting, and they really, and they have said that they really need this money, because otherwise, the children are gonna be in corrugated metal buildings and the cold and exposed to, right? I mean, seriously, like, those are gonna be the, the issues. And now you're sort of debating with, I don't know, I just think the logistics of that...
That's why I like the joint meetings, because we're all in the same room.
Sure, so it's about...
Or two meetings. Or, or they go to advisory, and advisory does what they do, because maybe they're not necessarily aligned. Um, I mean, I don't know, I just think it's, it begs the question.
At the end of the day, the, it's the board, is the town, is the select board's budget recommended or not by advisory? So, wanna get, make sure we have the right amount of time, and for both of you to take this up and...
Right, and that's my point, is they may come out, they may decide, we may say, well, we don't like it, and, and then they can decide whether or not they want to recommend something different than what we've presented. So, they'll have a different, potentially, a different angle.
So, if you...
There's a better word.
Give me, if I could just make sure, I wanna make sure I'm clear about what you, the message you want me to send to the schools, which is, this is what on paper is affordable if there was a two and a half percent tax increase. There is concern about being able to address the other pri, you know, other needs of the town. And so, we would like to know what a, um, no increase budget, you know, would mean for both the districts, so we can take that into account as we start the budget process. Is that a fair...
Yep.
That's fair. The only clarification I'd like to make, and it, maybe it's just me with math, right? That's why I went to law school. I have the, the prop two and a half would be the 2.5% increase. If we back that out, it's still a, a 0.57% increase due to new growth, correct? So, we're not saying zero.
For the most part, yes.
Right, so I'm not saying that it needs to be zero growth, or, or, I'm saying no more than 0.57.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I would start with zero growth and, and go from there.
Okay, but I think the message...
I'm just, I'm like, I just...
And also look at their actuals to date, and have them forecast where their variable expenses are gonna be, as they project that.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, that would get us a good start.
Yeah.
We can start redlining things and asking questions.
Redlining, I have red pencils. I do, I love my red pencils.
And ask some questions of them.
You can ask questions, I'll just use your red pencil.
And it's gonna be, and, and they've gotta realize, is the more detail they provide upfront, the easier this is gonna be.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Makes sense.
All right, so I'll talk to advisory chair as well, and we'll try to map out a, um, some type of, uh, sets of meetings that hopefully get all this, everyone, what they need to know. Um, I realize Kevin isn't here, but do you have a preference to go to their meetings on Wednesdays, or them to occasionally come to ours on Tuesdays? Do you, some mixture? I mean, I know you ca, you have commitments on Wednesdays.
Right, sometimes, yeah. I mean, either or, whatever.
All room dancing on Wednesdays?
No, we...
So much.
By other, by other...
Okay, thank you.
Ed, head, Ed?
Label says, don't touch it. Leave it on.
I don't want to hear what I'm saying.
Let me say, two, two points. Is there a budget calendar? Is there a calendar of when department budgets are to be done and when they're gonna be reviewed? That is public, a public calendar? How, how do departments know what the timeframes are?
Uh, we don't currently have one posted, but we can certainly get something up there.
I like that.
But I mean, the, the public meetings are gonna be with the selectmen and the advisory committee.
I understand that, but in any budget process, if you're going out to departments, don't you tell them when they have to have their budget ready for review?
Yes, we are, I'm just saying, those are not the public meetings.
I understand that, I understand that, I understand. I remember there will be public meetings after that.
My first time through the budget here.
Got another question, Ed?
I have a phone that's on. Oh, I'm sorry. And I guess the second question is, as part of the public who will be voting at town meeting on these budgets, it, it really needs to be clear to us, who's in charge here? You know, you, you, whether you got the advisory board, are they approving and the selectmen disapproving? Are they disapproving and the selectmen approving? I mean, it, it can't be confusing like that. It's really, at least from my perspective as a resident, I elect the selectmen here to run the town. So, I wanna know what the selectmen approve for the final budgets.
It's the role of the selectmen in any community to propose a budget to town meeting.
Yep.
The role of the advisory committee is to make a recommendation on that or any other article. So, the selectmen might recommend a budget of, um, 45 million, and the advisory committee could say, no, we recommend a budget of 44 because of this or that reason, or we don't think that's a sufficient budget because of something, and we recommend 46. That's, I mean, ideally, both boards are in agreement on the budget that comes before town meeting, but it doesn't have to be the case.
I, I, while I'm hearing that, I guess I'm just looking at, when you're talking about the sequence of how this is gonna be reviewed, you know, advisory and then selectmen, do you go back and forth? I mean, it's...
So, what, that was what I was trying to, to get at, is that it's my opinion that in the past, because she's absolutely right, it's our budget, it's the selectmen's determination of what goes before town meeting. It's our budget to vote on, but it has been my sense. Now, this is my first go-through as well in this role, right? Obviously, you know I was moderator, and then on advisory committee, and all sorts of other committees, and so I've gone through it from other perspectives, but it's my first here. It has, it is my sense that in the past, which things were sort of, kind of went through by us, by the select board, and they maybe made a few questions or comments, and then it went off to other places, and then kind of came back as a finished product. And what we're saying is that if it's our responsibility to present a budget to the town that we want them to vote up or down, then we want our hands in it from the beginning, and that's what we're trying to figure out. Because historically, you're right, the advisory board, because to Todd's point, there's oompteen members, is the hardest board to get people together. So, usually, that's where they would have the, the, um, department heads go to. But my sense is, well, that's great, but maybe we can work with that logistically, and maybe the department head's gonna have to go to two whole meetings in order for that to happen. I mean, we, we don't know that yet, but, but that's why it seemed confusing, sort of this organic conversation that we're having. I think that the ultimate net goal is for the select board to approve, whether they like it or not, right? Whatever, whether we're thrilled with it, or there's things that we're unthrilled with. Um, we approve the budget, and then the advisory committee either says, great, or, no, we don't like it, because the advisory committee's role is to write up those nice little...
More articles.
Article, well, yeah, they're, they're in charge of the articles, but they're also, they, they will write up, the advisor committee supports this because it means X, Y, and Z. And essentially, they just regurgitate the article, and then tell you whether they wanna vote for it, or they think you should vote for it or not, and why, and whether it's unanimous or not. Because that's their job, it's just sort of a cross-section of the population, appointed by the moderator, who tell you what they think. So, they don't actually, their role in the budget process is, because they're the largest body, that that's where the, the committee people go to, to give their information. But it doesn't have to be that way. Um, and so, it may be that we also say, hey, we think you're gonna have to go, um, if you really want something more than, than a no-net gain budget, you're gonna come to our meeting too, so...
Thank you.
Sorry to jump your way.
Nope, that's right, um, go ahead, gentlemen.
Hi, my name is Marty McNulty, 125 Winterbury Way. May I have a, ask a question of Todd? In the budgets that I see here, these are the actual results, correct? 1906, uh, from 2016 on?
These are the budgets.
Or these were the budgets?
These are the budgets.
Have all the advisories and the department managers been given the percentages of their actuals compared to their budgets year over year? Because maybe we're not starting in the right spot. They don't know how they did versus their budget, if they're up or they're over. So, maybe if we consider doing something a little bit different, the advisory board may either have less control or more control, based on the reality of the numbers.
Sure, so...
Thank you very much for your time.
Part of the budget process that we've done in the past has included a worksheet that's given to each of the departments. Um, that worksheet has the previous year's budget request, previous year's amount, actual amounts, budget request, previous year's amount, actual amounts, and actually, previous two-year budget requests, and the actual amounts from the previous year. So there's three amounts that are on there, and then their request. Um, that's the submission sheet that's given to each of the department heads. They work through those numbers. They typically give them back to my office. I put together the full comprehensive budget, and then we go through these meetings to say, yea or nay on all these items. So, that information is there. We don't have five years' worth of information. Uh, we certainly can look at exploring, adding that on, to see trends and things of that sort. I know that, um, we have the capital improvement plan that we are working on. We're also working on some forecasting on a going-forward basis, too, so, um, that is in the works.
Paul.
Uh, I, I, sort of on, on, on what Marty just said, and I asked this question, yes.
Would you give the mic to Paul? It wasn't your turn!
He's recognizing me.
Ed thought this was his meeting.
Yeah, he's quite an aggressive person, you know. Um, I have a couple of questions and, and a thought here. The advisory committees in some towns are called finance committees, I think, and, um, the experience I've had is that the finance committees often designate one or two members to work with the specific departments in the town, uh, from, throughout the budget process. In other words, the advisory committee may well have one or two people who are, uh, supposed to, uh, make sure that the school committee is providing all of their data and the initial budget proposal, uh, and that the advisory committee can study that proposal and all the iterations that go forth into town meeting. Uh, and if, I think if the advisory committee doesn't do that, um, somebody should lean on them to do it, so that one or two people really dig in deeply into the different budgets. And I'm only using the school budget as a, an example. Every budget, in my experience, deserves that kind of attention, and if the advisory committee has all that information from the beginning of the budget process, and they can fine-tune that and figure out very early on where the bulges are in the, in the proposed budgets, if there are any. And, uh, I, I think that if that's not happening, I think an informal discussion between the selectmen and the advisory committee might lead to that, because I, I don't understand an advisory committee, I don't know how many people there are, and if there are twelve people or, or whatever, eight people, if, if all of them have equal responsibility for all the departments-
Some number.
Nobody has specific responsibility for the departments, and I don't know where they're getting the data from the different departments. I don't know who's in charge of shepherding the data to the full committee. I don't know who's in charge of preparing an analysis of those budgets. Uh, those are the kinds of things I think that need to happen at that level, and I think the selectmen need that information, need to find out how that is going. So I, I, I think that that is a, a critical thing. I don't think the three select people can do that on, on their own. And the advisory committee is there to do that analysis, and then ultimately, you can work out your differences with the advisory committee's proposal, if, if there are differences. I've seen this often at town meeting, there may be a difference between what the committee, uh, the selectmen suggest and what the finance committee or advisory committee come up with, end up with, and it's typically worked out as a negotiation before town meeting, uh, sometimes not. So I, I think that that, that that would really help, if you could, if you could find out whether there are people in the advisory committee who are dedicated to specific departments and figuring out what's going on with their budgets.
There are.
There are.
Okay, okay. Well, I think they can be a source of tremendous information for you, and, and you can find out, you can talk to them and find out what, what their analysis is of the initial proposal and, and why they think it's weak or strong. Uh, so maybe that's already happening, and I apologize if it's already happening.
So, the only thing I, I would add to that observation, because they, they do do that, but they have their own function, and, and their functioning as they were designed to function, right, as the body appointed by the moderator. That's whose entity they are. They're not our entity. They, we try to work in tandem with them because it makes sense to do that, but they are not our entity. That said, one of the things that I noticed at the last town meeting was that there were a lot of new folks there, which is great, and a lot of them had a lot of questions, which is also great. Some of the questions were unpleasantly put. Um, I found them rude, and if I had thought that I would have been calm, I would have gotten off the stage and answered some of the questions, but I didn't think I was going to be calm, so I stayed at the dais. But what I thought was that some of the questions that people had, you know, they could do what, what Ed did, which was come to town hall and, and set up a meeting and get an info dump and then come back for more information. But another place, to your point, that people could go so that they could avoid just showing up at random town meetings and accusing everyone of being an idiot, without actually knowing what they were talking about, is they could go to the advisory committee meetings, or they can watch them on television, and the advisory fully vets all of this stuff that then people say, "Well, we didn't know about it, you're a bunch of idiots." So, to your point, they are a great resource for a whole lot of things.
Yeah, I mean, I understand. I suspect the advisory committee formally is a subcommittee of town meeting or something, but I still think they, they-
Right, they're a great resource.
-can have a close relationship with the selectmen. Thanks.
Okay.
Can I speak now?
No.
No.
I said, "I said no!"
And you said, "No."
I said, "No!"
Oh.
Going to make you wait now. I, I think to what Paul said, and I like-
I thought he was kidding, he wasn't.
I wasn't kidding you, because Paul stole my thunder. I like Paul's idea. I think maybe, and I know, and I, I know, I know less about the advisory board than you, but maybe if the advisory board can be tailored to start to work with the directors of each department, and provide the board of selectmen with an update maybe through the month of January as to where they're going.
Well, that's what we're going to do.
Well, yeah, but what you guys are going to do is, you provide, so that when we see it, we see the variance, variances between our zero-based budget or our flat budget, and what the advisory board and the departments and you and Todd have done, so that we're not asking, so we're looking at it from a very high level, saying, "Why is that two million higher?" Or, "Why is that, you know, why do you need four more million dollars?" And so, and then you can, then it can be explained to us. And the advisory board has already reviewed it. So with, it's not going back to the advisory board after us, it's coming to us after advisory board has gone through the detailed level of analysis.
We're going to give you the budget first, because you're the board that has to set it, and we're going to tell you what we, we're going to tell you what we recommend based on what your advice is to us, what you want us to achieve and what it means.
Well, we just told you, zero base, so we want to see no increases. So there's your budget. Now go back to the departments with the advisory board's help and start to get us there. And then tell us why you can't get us there with the advisory board recommending, so that we can then see what those variances are that get us to what they're, where they want to be. And that way, the advisory board is involved in the process all the way along, and the board of selectmen then can look at a budget that makes sense, as opposed to the board of selectmen receiving a budget that's over budget and having to work backwards.
So the only things I'll chime in, the two problems with that is, it's not the advisory committee's role. And so what you're saying to a group of nine volunteers who are already probably pretty well booked out is, "Hey, we're just going to add willy-nilly, notwithstanding the fact that we're not the moderator, we're going to add a bunch of requirements to what you do, and they're all going to probably reject that." But notwithstanding that fact, one of the problems that I think that you have, that I know I have from prior years, is that's kind of how it was done. Let the advisory committee vet everything, and then it comes back through by-
But they never brought to the selectmen the, the details, and they didn't bring it back on a-
That's what we're going to do.
They're going to bring it-
How often are you going to do it, though?
Well, that's what we're going to set up, is that-
I, I guess I don't know how you're going to do this for us.
We're going to ask, we're going to give the advice to the, the departments, we're going to give them the history and the, and the, all the forms. We're going to say to them, "Come back with a no increase budget."
Okay.
And, or, or if you can't make that, tell us what it is. We are going to have individual meetings with them, and we're going to push that around and get the detail that we need to be able to tell you, "Here's what it is, and this is what it means. It means we would lay off these people, or we would cut this service," or whatever it is that we would do. And you can have that. You may be in a situation where advisory says, "Selectmen, that's great that you want to have a zero increase budget, but we actually don't agree with that. We think it should be higher because we don't want to see class sizes of X or public safety services of Y, and we want to recommend it higher."
Okay.
So, I'm just guessing, I, I could be very wrong about that. Our, our goal is to give you all the detail you need, so you can understand what your request means, and then we'll share that with them as well, and they're going to just, if we come back with a zero increase budget and the board says, "Yep, we agree, that's what we want to present to town meeting," then we need to work with advisory and have, and understand what their questions are, and whether or not they would also recommend that same budget or something different.
So their questions are going to be to the board, the select board, really. That's who the advisory board is really asking, because we're going to set the budget. If they don't like it, then they have to come to us. So I guess, yes, you have to work with the select board-
Mm-hmm.
-and give us those variance analysis. And then at the same time, if you want to give them to the advisory board to see where we're going, great.
I think it's helpful to them to understand it.
And I think for the advisory board to come forward to us if they have issues with our budget, and they'll have to sit with us and go through the variances of each budget. So I guess we don't need to sit on, on the advisory board. The advisory, because it's not-
I don't know what level of detail the selectmen got in the past. I'm concerned to make sure that I can answer any question that comes up, to get the level of detail from the departments to say to you what this budget means, what's different than the past, why it is what it is, and what, what won't be done if, if we, if we move forward with it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't need to sit on the advisory, I don't need to sit with the advisory board, because you're going to provide me that information. So why do I need, I only need to have the advisory board come in and tell me why they don't like my recommendation. And then for us to go through it and determine why, whether it should be what the board of selectmen want, or should be something different. So that's all I'm saying, is they, everybody should be-
Right, I think in the past-
It's all coming to us. It isn't going to be, we're going to go sit on advisory board, it's not going to do us any good.
Well, the reason-
And it doesn't make any sense based on the way you want to do the budget cycle.
Right, the way she's going to run it, it's different, because the only reason it worked, or the reason it worked in the past, was again, you had a body that was large, and so, and had questions, because they wanted to know, all right, if the line item was going to be fourteen million dollars, why? And so they would have the, um, the, the chair of that, um, or the, the department head come and explain it to them, and they would ask questions. And to avoid having to have that same department head go to explain it to a bunch of different people, people would go and sit in on the advisory. But the advisory's raison d'etre is just to decide whether or not what we decide-
Yeah.
-works for them or not. So it's, they are definitely on a different track. And so they're, they're a source of information, just because they happen to be here, not because they have any sort of calling to support us, other than we're tax-paying members of the same community that they are charged with doing it.
Hopefully what you, hopefully what you provide us with will answer both bodies.
Yes, I, I guess my only concern is that my impression, and I could be wrong, Todd, please correct me if I am, is that there was seemingly more of a similar mindset to bringing forth a balanced budget with a level of services that we had come to expect. If that's, is that a fair statement?
It's a fair statement.
So if that's a fair statement, then coming back with a no tax increase budget, I can promise you, without asking anybody any questions, means that for town and school, you're talking about less people providing whatever the services are that you're talking about, whether it's in planning, or it's in KP, or it's public works or anything. So, I think it's going to be important for everyone to understand, if that's what the, the board wants to put forth, advisory needs to understand that ahead of time, because if they're in a completely different mindset about what they want to recommend, that's, there's going to be some conflict there.
But no one knows that answer, because no one knows what that, those numbers should be. So advisory board is going to learn the same as we're going to learn. We're going to learn why that is right or why that's wrong.
Well, I can tell you-
So I, I mean, their mindset, they, if they have a mindset they, they want 3%, to me, that's the wrong attitude going in. Let's, let's build, let's build this up from the foundation, not build it up from the building and then build a foundation underneath it, because usually it crumbles.
Right, but if you-
So let's build it up from the foundation.
You want a zer-, if you want a zero-based budget, if you want no increase with, with employee union contracts worth somewhere between 3 and 4%, depending on the group, and I don't know what the school situation is, I can promise you that there, you cannot achieve that. You cannot achieve a zero or 0.57 budget with the number of people we have today. It will not be possible. So then what we need to understand is, what level of service is acceptable to everyone, and how much do we need to cut, or what, what can we cut, what, what could be cut before you start to erode that level of service, whether it's, like I said, kids in the classroom, or what, whatever the service is.
And it may be, quite candidly, I mean, I have not committed to cutting anything, but I, I do understand the idea of saying, every year, we've just sort of assumed we're going to throw the extra money at you. We're going to do the, um, level-funded budget with no change in service.
Yep.
Here you go.
Yep.
It's 2.5 every year, it's, that's great.
Yep.
And what we're saying is, all right, well, we'd like you to come back and explain to us, what happens if it's zero? And you come in and you say, "If it's zero, now you have twenty-seven kids in a classroom." Well, we don't want that.
Yep.
So, all right, so now we add it back in, and so now that is, I get why that's-
That's fine, just to make sure everyone understands that.
Right.
Oh, we understand that, yeah. And I think advisory board will just have to participate in the process.
I'm not looking to fire people. I'm just looking not to-
I, I'm not suggesting we want to get anyone scared about that, I'm just saying, you know, with, just on simple numbers and basically how the town is, the decisions the town has made in the past, those are the sorts of things we have to talk about.
But I think it'll be good for all of us, because you've never sat through one of our budgets, we've never sat through one of our budgets, it will help all of us.
It's fun for everybody.
If we start from a, start from the bottom up and work our way, and then we'll understand where they get, how they get there.
Okay. Most fun for Todd, because he's pretty excited.
Give him something to do on weekends. Ed, Ed is chomping at the bit, he really is.
I'm, I'm very pleased to hear this conversation, because ultimately, as the people who are putting the money into this kitty, I, I appreciate hearing that it's not an unlimited flow of funds, and there's got to be some give and take, because we can't pay for everything that anybody may want. And it's got to be reasonable, don't get me wrong. We want good schools, we want fire and police, don't get me wrong. That's why we live here, we're part of our town. But, there's, there's got to be, there's got to be controls and limits, and, and that's the accountability that everybody has to go through. I live on a budget, you live on a budget, and so does our town departments have to live on a budget that we can live with. And that's the bottom line. So it's, it's not just, what do they want? I'll tell you what I want, too. I'm not going to get it, but-
Tap him on the shoulder. Just rip it out of his hand.
Go ahead.
Hi, um, what is the background of the advisory board people? Are they financial and CPAs or accountants? Or isn't that required at all, just because?
They're, um, you can probably, so as I said, they're appointed by the moderator, and as attorney, uh, attorney, as Mr. Rosenberg pointed out earlier, um, it's hard to find people who are willing to volunteer their time in the town, and they are people who are willing to volunteer their time in the town. I had, when I was appointed to the advisory committee, Dan Winslow was the moderator, and, um, I had no experience in finance. I'm an attorney, but I'm, you know, I do divorce, I do financial statements for people getting divorced. That was my experience in finance. But, I mean, I learned. So there are people who don't work outside the home, but they manage a home with a bunch of kids, and they come at it from a bunch of different perspectives. I think that their bios, at least it used to be back in the day, that the bios were available online, um, but now I'm seeing a shaken head in the back that they are no longer available online. So, um, but you could ask, um, Mr. Tallerman, who is the moderator, um, and I'm sure he would happily give you the background for each of the advisory committee members, and you could go to their meetings and kind of noodle around with them and figure it out. Because I don't, I candidly don't know anymore, because it changes. I know that they just lost a lawyer, you know, I mean, it just changes. But there is no mandate that you have. It'd be nice, right? Oh, you have a certain number of CPAs.
Say that, it would be a nice thing.
But, no, so you'll have to run for moderator, and then, then you can appoint them.
Yeah, thank you. And also, you stated that, uh, you didn't want to give them, because they're volunteers, you didn't want to give them extra work or impossible work, but really, paying the taxes and the budget are probably the most important things to the people, other than certain services, um, you know, the uniform services. So, if these people can spend the time, I mean, you would think that they'd want to be on a board and do a thorough job. I would think the things that are being brought up to do in this year, which haven't been done maybe for 150 years, they should have done it already, and they should be prepared to do it. And if it takes time and they don't have the time, then we have to find people to do it. We have 11,000 residents, somebody else has to step up, if that's the case, to do it the right way.
Well, what I was saying was, they have a mandate provided to them by the moderator, has nothing to do with us, and they're already doing the maximum number of meetings for that mandate. And so, for a group that has no control or oversight or responsibility for them to say, "Hey, I know you're already doing six, eight, 10 hours of volunteer work as per the mandate that you agreed to sign up for, but we've decided we're going to add volunteer hours on for you, even though we're nothing to do with you other than another towns person," may be met with resistance. That's what I was saying.
I, I can understand it, and they may be doing a great job.
Hold the microphone up here.
I appreciate it. Most people don't want- I could say that. Most people don't want me to.
No, I can understand that aspect. But the fact is, is it's got to be done and done correctly by people who are qualified to do it.
But I guess what I'm saying is their job, their role is to, is to give their advice. And they assume that they are, they are getting the information they need in order to give their advice to the townspeople. They don't have a jo, a role in advising the Select Board. That's not their job.
No, but the job is to look into all the figures of, in the budgets of the individuals.
Sure, and they do do that. They do do that. That's why the individuals go to them to their meetings.
Okay.
So I think what you've got is you sort of have an idea where we want to go, I think. Do you?
Oh, yeah.
Good, whether you like it or not. I think January, you're going to have a, you'll hopefully have a little bit of a idea of a calendar for us as well as when the different, how you, how you want to proceed with your different boards. I don't know if you want to have the head of the Advisory Board talk to us or if you want to talk to him individually.
I'll talk to him first.
Yeah, and see what he wants to, how he wants to proceed. And I think that's a start. You sort of have our, our mandate.
Got it.
Okay, great. All right, next, we're going to discuss on that segue of the 150th anniversary and the parade. Don't leave, guys. Stay for the parade discussion. Come on.
You gotta stay for all the good stuff.
We're going to have our own parade right now.
I have good news, I have good news for you.
It's free?
We are a zero-based budget at this point.
There you go.
Zero-based or zero-dollar?
Both. How are you, Paul?
Great, how are you, Chris?
Sir?
I don't know if they're going to-
So these are in no particular order.
Okay.
Oh, I see, okay, all right.
That was your question.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Who said 8:30 tonight? You thought you were going home?
Sean's leaving?
Of course.
I, I texted Sean. I'm like, I'm not going to be able to pick Jack up from hockey. Someone else is going to have to-
8:30 came and went.
Yeah. If, if he can stick around, would he?
For this discussion?
Yeah. Obviously.
She's leaving, right? Go ahead, Paul.
So, nice to be back in front of you again. So I came in once before and I talked to the Board in the town about the committee to run a 150th anniversary parade. I threw out a few items. I did throw out a budget of, to stop the shooting from the hip, of about $30,000 to $40,000. And I think I said, I think it's important for me to know where the town's at. What does the town, meaning the Select Board, what do you want to do? And do you want to go forward with this activity? So I'll just open with that. So I'm going to, I gave you a kind of a, an outline agenda. I want to put you on the spot, so to speak.
Good.
And, and find out, what do you guys want to do? Do you want to do this? I know that we're having a dinner celebration that Betsy Pines is putting together. But beyond that, there's nothing else planned.
Right.
Have you folks talked about it at all?
No.
No.
Okay. But we're going to, right now.
Right now.
Conversation starts right here, right now.
Well, we started, we started before. And I was hoping that some seeds were planted so that you've-
Apparently not.
Well, we can't discuss it because then we'd be deliberating.
Yeah, we can't-
But we can talk about it here.
That's why we need five members.
Okay, all right. So, all right, so then let's, let's just jump to section number three.
Is that cost?
That would be committee-
No, okay.
Committee designation. Would you be willing to set this part of the anniversary year up as a separate committee? Or do you want to put them like, you know, just have a 150th anniversary committee? And then the parade is one subset, Betsy Pines another subset? And so far, we're the only two subsets of the town. Would you be willing to do that?
There's a third subset waving.
Is there a third subset?
I just don't know whether to let-
Go ahead.
Should I come up or optimize?
Sure. Sit next to Paul.
Donna Jones. It might have been 2015 when I told the Selectmen and the Town Administrator at the time, hey, our anniversary's coming up. Oh, cool, we should do something. What's been done in the past? I made the list, what it was, what was done when we were turned 100. And it was smaller when we turned 9, 125. And I went through, asking these questions. Can the town support any of this? Pay for, pay for the police, pay for the fire if there were fireworks type thing? You know, does it have to be individually funded? How would that work? Do, do, does it have to be an appointed board that follows the open meeting rules? And every penny comes paid out of the town budget? You know, what if we say, oh, well, we want to hold fireworks and we've got to privately collect $10,000? And then the fireworks don't happen? Does the individual have to get the money back? Does it, does a nonprofit organization have to be formed? I never got a direct answer or, you know, like, I got an answer. One person researched and said, oh, you need a nonprofit. And then somebody else said, no, you don't need to do that. These people being town employees or, or Select Board. So I mentioned it to the Historical Commission. And they said, oh, yeah, that was fun, what we did in the past. All we want to take on is repeating the dinner. And instead of just a slideshow, they're having a dinner and actors. So that, I said, you know, what if we do have a bigger anniversary? We don't have any money for that. We don't want to make any effort for that. I mentioned it to Recreation. They said, we don't have a lot of money to put towards it. And then they said, well, you know, let us know what you plan and we'll see if we can get something towards it. Gee, we could have a parade with different sections, neighborhood sections of town. Anybody make a float, you know? I mentioned it to a librarian. They said, oh, that you could do a book cart dance down the street. And never got the direct answer is, how do we fund this?
Well, so I, I have some suggestions. And that's why I asked Todd to stick around a little bit because we kind of talked a little bit. But again, just to kind of circle back, I mean, do you guys want this to happen?
I think, I love, I think the idea of a parade is great. I think it does celebrate our 150th. I got, I had the opportunity to participate in the Santa's Parade.
Okay.
Which I think I would agree with you on the route issue.
Yeah.
A, I thought it was too short and I thought it was the wrong route. I think a route down Main Street would far be better than a route sort of crisscrossing down Rockwood Road and Lordman Street. So I agree with you on that discussion. I think the idea of a parade is great. I mean, it is our 150th.
Yeah, I mean, it's-
You know, we don't have the most-
It's not an annual event.
Exactly. And, and you know, it's not a town that has a huge amount of, all kinds of great history, but has history. And, and I think for people, especially the younger people, to appreciate the town, they have to appreciate its history. And I think one of the frustrations is the older people in town worked very hard at this town. A lot of sweat and tears. And, and I think the younger people, it's good for them to see that and understand how the town has progressed. And the only way you do it is through a parade, through a dinner. You know, maybe there's a float on the parade. Maybe there's something in the parade that has the time travelers. Maybe there's the, the neighborhoods being represented in a parade. But I, I think the idea of a parade is a great idea. And again, it's, it happens every maybe 50 years. Most of us, you were here for the 100th, I gather. Maybe I won't be here for the 200th. You know, I'd like to be, but it's something that if you want to be part of, I think it's a great idea. So I do like it.
So the reason, the reason, and I don't mean to cut you off, but the reason why I'm asking for a committee designation is so that we can create the framework to put that together with some official capacity. Because otherwise, it's just me talking to people randomly and getting random numbers and just keep coming back to you guys. And nothing really ever gets stirred together and there's no cohesiveness to it.
Well, I think, it sounds like Betsy's got her hands full with the dinner and that's what they want to focus on. So I think this sounds like a separate committee for the 150th parade.
Yeah.
Or 150th festivities slash parade. I think that makes some sense in my mind. If Betsy, because she did come in last week and she was pretty-
Right, she's, yeah.
She was pretty set on what she wants to focus her attention on.
So I guess my only issue, I like parades. I like the Memorial Day parade. It's my favorite. And I like, and I, so I grew up in a town that had a huge, huge parade. I grew up in Hingham and they have Fourth of July parade that, I know it's not Fourth of July, but Fourth of July parade, the people come from other states to see. And everybody, there's floats and bicycles and horses and everybody gets involved and it's awesome. Love parades. But I'm also mindful that we just finished a discussion where we're talking about a budget where we're not going to go up 2.5%, which could, if we decided, result in somebody losing their job. And I just heard you throw out the number. It sounded like somebody's annual salary. So I have a concern about how we pay for a parade. That to Donna's point, eh, it'd be fun, but, but nobody's gotten, it hasn't, it's not the craze that's swept the town. It's just been a few select individuals trying to get people to stay focused on the fact that it would be-
For sure, especially, you know, I mean-
So that's my issue. So if we appointed a committee, does that committee then expect that we're then going to bankroll a parade when the reality is we're about to begin budget season and we don't have a lot of money?
Well, so-
But I heard you mention zero dollars and so I'm intrigued and that's why I want to move to cost.
Okay, so, so the reason why I asked Todd to come back is because him and I-
Todd's going to pay for it?
Yes, Todd's going to pay for it, yeah. He gets paid too much anyway, so.
We're going to handle that in the budget process.
Yeah. So, and I put homepage button, pledge page and sign up and all that good stuff on here. So my thoughts were that if we, we have some resources in-house, I believe, we can build sub-pages to the town's homepage. So what would happen if, say, for instance, you set it, set us up, me, Donna, you could be on the committee as well. So we have a committee or two and maybe Betsy Pine, you know, a third person. And-
David's chomping at the bit to join.
I don't know.
Come on in.
He is not leaning in.
David is a registrar and can't be on any of them.
Okay.
I was going to say, usually I can tell by David's body language if he's about to sign on. And he was all the way out here. This was not David joining body language.
So we do like a pledge page. Or we have a page where people can go and pledge $1, $5, $10, $25, 100 bucks, $50, whatever it is. Or a mechanism in place for allowing us to go out, me, myself, Donna, anybody else who would want to be on the committee, to go out and solicit contributions and support for a town celebration. And, and the reason why I would propose it in that manner is that it would put people's minds at ease that it's, well, I promise I'll spend it on the parade. It's, it's going into a, a town kind of shell-organized budget. I don't know if that makes sense to you folks, or, or a pledge page.
First of all, help me understand who's building these web, these sub-pages.
Well, that was the other thing. I did talk to Todd and, you know, apparently, do we have people in IT who can-
We have a IT director right now. He's not a webpage expert. The person we had part-time has left. So I'm anxious about our ability to manipulate that. None of us are web designers and it's a kind of a homegrown-
How does it get maintained now?
Following a couple of templates that had been made, our, our IT director and our assistant town clerk can make some changes. But I, I want to be very cautious. I don't want you to have the impression that there's a web person somewhere in our organization that can do this.
I'm not looking for anything elaborate. I'm just looking for, you know-
I'm trying to be clear that I'm not sure we can do, I'm not, I don't want to not meet your need, but I'm concerned that we could. But to the question of money, I'm looking at Todd. I think we could simply set up a gift account that people, the Selectmen could accept gifts, could go into the account and turn around and be paid for that specific purpose for the parade.
You could do that.
That, that's the simple part.
Okay.
Yeah, the webpage, just, I'm anxious because I'm not an expert in it.
Yeah.
So I don't want you to have a false impression.
Do you think they could embed a link or something?
Let me ask. We, we don't have a very robust website and the person-
I mean, I know if a new person joins the committee-
The person who put it together-
They're able to, you know, put a email address and stuff like that in there and edit stuff.
Edit what's already there. Create anything new. The person who put the website together doesn't work here anymore. So I don't have someone staff who's good at that. I don't have a company that I can turn to.
Okay.
Do the schools have IT people?
They have IT people, but they too have a very simple, homegrown website. We've actually talked about working together on better websites for both, but we haven't gotten there. It's pretty static. That's the problem.
I guess, and maybe I'm wrong, is it, I've seen these, is it U Fund that you see?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, individuals set up U Fund pages.
GoFundMe?
GoFundMe type, yeah, I mean, and that's the whole- So maybe there's a way to do a GoFundMe to our website that-
I will ask. I'm, I'm grasping because I'm not a website expert.
I don't know, but I mean, that would be the first question is, can we do that?
The guy knows computers in the front row, though.
Just, so all I'm looking for is, is, first of all-
See, now he's leaning in.
Some, some official designation, right? You know, not so much in the form of a commitment, you know, that, you know, that we'd be able to dictate things, but it would just give validity to us going out and starting to solicit on the town's behalf of building a parade. Because that's basically what we'd be doing, is building a parade, right? We've already talked about the date. I think we talked about the date of September 9, 12th or 13th, whichever that Sunday is. It's a Patriots away game. And whether we do it on a Saturday or a Sunday, it could be further refined. I'd be leaning more towards Sunday after 12 o'clock, something like that. You know, after, you know, services are over and things of that nature. And then we already talked about a route.
Would you have a rain date as well?
Typically, parades are held rain or shine. Typically.
Okay.
It is hurricane season, but-
Hmm?
I said it is hurricane season, but we're hardy, rugged New Englanders. We can, we can do an umbrella. But, but here I am again, the wet, the wet blanket. So say we get a GoFundMe and we get $98. And it's, I still heard $40,000 come out of your mouth when you sat down. Are we canceling the parade?
So the other thing is I kind of come-
Or are you ensuring that you'll pay the delta? What's going on about the money?
So I have some other fundraising ideas, but I'd rather not voice them publicly until-
Okay, that sounds not at all concerning.
No, what could go wrong, right?
I'm going to Vegas and-
No, no, it's just, it would be contributions through the purchases of other things, of, say, from retail establishments that are already in the town. So maybe a portion of those, that purchase price of whatever that is, would go towards-
Sure, I understand. So you're going to go around to different establishments and ask if they'll, they'll help out?
Say like, hey, if you bought X, right? Could we dedicate, you know, 25 cents or 50 cents?
Right. So again, just because apparently I've adopted the wet blanket position for the evening and I apologize, I like parades. We have Girl Scouts in town who sell, who sell cookies and have their, you know, all sorts of fundraising where they're asking for assistance from the retailers. And we have the Boy Scouts in town who, as well, are like, can we sell our popcorn in front of your establishment? Will you donate? Will you buy a certain amount? There's a lot of people putting demands on the retail establishments. I think it's a great idea, but just again, hypothetically, we've now increased our nut to $163.27.
Short parade.
For the, short parade. All right, there we go.
Very quick parade.
I'm all for a parade that can be self-funded or funded through fundraising efforts or through donations. I am all not for a parade that's funded by a town that's about to go and say, we're, we're looking for no, you know, tax increase. So I just am curious, do you have a, hey, I'm going to fundraise through June? And if I don't have it by June, then just I'll be in town center and play it for $100?
Yeah, if we don't have a sense of, you know, amount, I would think by, you know, late spring. you know, amount, uh, I would think by, you know, late spring, you know, I, yeah.
That's all I'm asking, is do you have an end game after which we say, all right, we tried?
Yeah, yeah, nice effort, you know.
We'll, we'll give you your money back or we'll buy wreaths for, you know, the, um, the folks in town who served their country and who are buried in the cemetery for next Christmas. You pick, or something like that, right? I mean, somehow you give them their money back or see if they'll mind donating it to something else. But I just don't want to end up, as much as it's exciting to have a hundred and fiftieth, I don't want to end up blowing money that could go to a snowplow or a teacher's assistant or.
Well, again, it's, uh, not an every year occasion.
I understand.
So, it's, I mean, it's, it happens once at, at a minimum every twenty-five years, so.
I think, I think the idea is setting up a committee.
Yeah.
And then allowing them to.
Explore. Let's use the word explore.
I love fundraising. I love fundraising.
Explore, use, yeah, explore.
Set up a committee and then explore funding.
Yeah.
And then come back to us as to how you're doing with your funding.
Yeah.
I think would be the start.
Yeah.
Because what's the expense? The expense is the police detail?
Well, that's a good question, so.
Like what is, why is a parade, if, like, if, again, hypothetically.
So, so.
We're starting at one end of Main Street and we're going to the other end of Main Street and we're, yeah, right?
So, you know, uh, there's a.
Thirty or forty thousand dollars.
I think, I, you weren't here at the first meeting that I came to, so.
Yeah, it's because I had not one but two root canals.
We talk about, uh, street closures, police and fire support, um, uh, food and beverage for volunteers, facilities for people who weather the day, no matter what it turns out to be.
So some of the stuff you could probably cut by saying, all right, yeah, we're going to have to ship in some portaloos, but, um, we're going to let vendors know that we're, they're, you know, we're having a parade, come sell your wares and volunteers just have to bring a sandwich, right? I mean, like, some of the stuff you could probably cut if you're close on your fundraising. Is, I, I guess I'm asking, I'm sure you're going to have some fixed budget.
I, I will tell you that I did reach out to a couple of, um, more, you know, prominent bands, you know, just, I'll leave it at that. And their budget for participation in an event like that is generally two to three thousand dollars per group. Now, that's not to say that, um, you know, you would necessarily go after people like that, but, you know, typically on a.
Talking about a marching band in the parade or a band playing on?
No, uh, no, like a marching band.
Oh, okay, yeah, you got to have a marching band.
Yeah. Uh, and, um, but, you know, open it up for any committees, um, groups, associations, you know, the Grange, the YMCA, the Alliance, the Norfolk Community League, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, you know, all that stuff, you know, come in and, you know, any business that's established in town. If, if they want to tie in a theme, a float or somehow, you know, then, yeah, we make a, an infrastructure for them to participate. Celebrate the town's hundred and fiftieth anniversary, so.
So, does this come back to my original question? Is this a selectmen-appointed committee?
Mm-hmm.
What happened before was the, uh, select board slash town administrator, administrative assistant, put up a sign that said, if you're interested, give, you give me your name, and they said, I'm interested, what do you want me to do? And so then I, eventually I reached out to some of them and they, I still have some names that said, yeah, I'm willing to help.
So it sounds like Paul is the grand poobah of this newly appointed committee and you are, um, the first assistant chair.
Sure.
Second seat of the.
No, I, no, I'm not the grand poobah.
What are we formally meant to do to?
Giant fez.
Just, uh, make a motion to approve that?
We need like a sword to put on either shoulder.
I'd suggest that you ask people to submit their applica- uh, there's a volunteer application on the website, they could submit that. And we'll gather them all up and hand them to you on the seventh and you can decide who you want to appoint, how big a committee you want to have.
Oh, that's right, because.
Well, the, the other thing I was thinking too is, you know, Norfolk's got a pretty active Facebook page, which I'm not a member of.
Nor am I.
Will be, um, and, um, you know, we could, you know, maybe do more things with some of the social media that we have available to us to, to generate, um, volunteers or whatnot, and to generate interest from groups and associations in town.
I think you can just become a member on that page, right?
Yeah, yeah.
You could become a member and tell them that you're leading up the hundred and fiftieth.
Exactly, yeah.
That we're going to have a, uh, the board is going to vote on a committee on the seventh and please volunteer, please provide their information to us.
Yeah, and just create the shell work for this committee to establish meetings, to generate more volunteers, to come up with fundraising ideas. And then, you know, um, and then we can try to start drawing a budget picture together. Because quite frankly, um, I know Chief Stone at the time said he'd be willing to donate some of his men's, you know, or people's resources, but not all of it. And I think the same goes for the fire department as well.
We have union contracts, we have to.
Uh, I'm just, I'm not questioning that, I'm just saying, you know, I'm just saying, that's what he said.
Parades in those contracts? I don't remember us seeing anything in parades about, in those contracts, that during a parade.
It can be requiring them to work to manage traffic control or whatever it is.
The detail.
It's a detail.
Yeah, it's a detail. Yeah, I, I, I'm cognizant of that, you know.
It's very typical.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean.
Not requiring them to work, we're requiring them to participate.
Good luck with that.
Remind me, and then, remind me in the next contract negotiation to exclude parades.
Yeah, that'll.
You know?
So, you know, again, we're just, I, so, so again, the, the committee would be able to, uh, with some validity, be able to start to kind of like build that, that, that structure for you so that we can present something more concrete. You know, uh, again, uh, we did talk about the route, are we, are we good on the route, or?
I heard there were two different options, I don't know that there's a plan on the route.
The, the options that were, I presented initially was, uh, leave out of Freeman Kennedy, come down, uh, Rockwood, cross over the tracks and then terminate up, up here on the upper parking lot, you know, to, um, uh, cross from Walgreens. Probably not the best route, right? Uh, then, uh, I know Chief Stone wanted us to leave out of HOD and go down Boardman Street and terminate into Freeman Kennedy. And, you know, um, it's not my idea of the best route for a parade that's celebrating a momentous occasion. My compromise would be, uh, leave out of HOD and come down Main Street, come up across the street over here and then terminate up into the upper parking lot of, you know, just past Walgreens here, or terminate, you know.
The MBTA lot?
Yeah.
So we'll probably have to get there.
I'm sure, yeah, I know, there's a lot of permission, a lot of things you have to do, yeah.
What about starting at Old Town Hall, coming up Main Street and then doing your termination up here?
Well.
That way you're on Main Street.
Yeah, so the reason why, um, a, a school was chosen, uh, for staging purposes. When you have large groups, structured, uh, you know, if you're doing floats, uh, lots of groups, lots of bands, there's a lot of vehicles, a lot of traffic, a lot of confusion, you're just going to need the space to coordinate it. And that was the whole reason for, uh, starting out of Freeman Kennedy and/or starting out of HOD.
We should go to the prison. Start it, start it at HOD and then just go down to the prison.
Yeah, yeah. Or just go down to Old Town Hall or somewhere down that way.
That's fine, you know, uh, you know, or, or we, or we terminated at, you know, at the, uh, you know, just past Dunkin' Donuts in front of the fire station.
Right.
You know, I mean, I, that's fine either way.
Or you could terminate at that lot.
But, but again, that wasn't, that wasn't the route that was recommended, so.
But that is, you're right, that's a straight shot. You go HOD down to the bump and then they can bang into that.
You don't want to make the route too long for people to.
But I don't think you want to make it too short, like the Santa Parade, as nice as it was.
Well, that's because that's for littles.
It was very, it was very quick.
Yes.
For little, little feet. It starts with the old timers.
Yeah, there's no train, I mean, the problem, the problem with crossing the train tracks is the train, right? You know, you got to stage a parade so that you don't have interruptions.
You just have to go through the rotary. You stay on Main Street, it'll train track.
Right.
Yeah, I like that idea, HOD down to past Dunkin' Donuts and go into the MBTA parking lot after that.
If, if all the, you know, department heads are in agreement on that, that is acceptable to the hopefully newly established parade committee.
When you get your committee.
Yeah, once your committee is established, you can work that out.
You can ask the police chief.
Paul, is that good for you? Uh, yeah, that's good. Okay, yeah, that's good.
There you go.
Donna, you on with that?
So you got your route, you got your date, you got your, how you're going to advertise.
Your seedling of committee and you're going to advertise.
Committee signs up in Town Hall here as, would you like for volunteerism? Can they put anything up in our?
Oh, sure, I mean, we don't have a huge number of people coming to read the bulletin board, but sure.
Ooh, maybe they could borrow a sandwich board.
Social media is probably the better place to go.
Attached to it, like a dollar bill attached, if I can get more.
So, we'll, we'll, I could, you know, that just gives me the, the framework to start.
To solicit, yeah.
So, I mean, if, if there's a motion that you can make on that, that'd be great, just so I know that it's officially recorded.
There's no, there's nothing.
There's no motion needed.
This is on this.
No motion needed.
Seventh will make a motion, once you bring us a committee. Seventh, we're going to deem you a committee.
The seventh?
Yes.
I won't be, I won't be here.
We can still make you the committee chair.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, if somebody else comes in.
Your first lieutenant will be presenting for you.
If Donna decides she wants to be chair and you're not here and she makes a really good pitch though.
Oh, that's okay. I, I can be a real pain in the, in the backside.
Then we've got ourselves a problem.
Because we squashed the remote participation, we can't really participate on the seventh, right?
I first met Paul in nineteen ninety-five at the anniversary because he was running an airshow.
Oh, go ahead, yeah. I did, I did, I did do that. I, I put that together, me and a, and a few other guys, we put together the two airshows, uh, that we had at the airport.
Right.
That's right.
Okay. Does that, um, does that satisfy you for this evening?
Uh, I think so, yeah, yeah, it allows me to start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
David?
Just a few random comments. One is that I think in order to make a permanent committee, you need a bylaw change, but that I believe the selectmen, the select board can create an ad hoc committee. Blithe probably has more expertise, so I'm, I'm guessing that you, what you want to do is create an ad hoc committee. Another thing is, um, the town Facebook page was mentioned and the administrators of that page want to be sure that the members are Norfolk residents. And so there's an application process basically where they verify that you actually live in town. But I think everybody in town gets admitted. Uh, and the last thing, this is tricky for me to say because I don't want it to sound like I'm volunteering. I am not volunteering. But, um, there is a lot of technical talent in town, uh, people who in fact are programmers, web developers. And I think that, um, uh, in addition to my desire to have people involved in decision-making, that, um, the town would be wise to try to use volunteer technical talent that is available for things like web work.
Blithe probably knows better how that works. We don't want anybody putting a spike on our system, right?
Well, I mean, volunteers who can, can help us maintain our website are great, we just need them to be able to help us when we need help. Not, you know, that's, people have busy lives and being, they're not getting paid for it, sometimes there's less motivation to be consistently available to do whatever it needs to be done. And I, I think our website's lacking, but the cost of replacing it is probably not in our, in the cards. So, we may have to be more creative about it.
So it might be, and I'll, I'll let David, you speak in a second, but one of the committees that David and I were on back in the day was the, I can't remember what the name of it was, but it was the.
Town Meeting Technology.
There you go, that was what it was. And there were a number of people who were the sort of computer wonks, for lack of a more elegant term, people really good at that kind of thing on the committee, some of whom were still employed, some of whom were not. And I bet that within the town, and I bet that Donna and David know some of these people, I bet it would, it might be interesting to see. Anyway, let me put it that way, who in town has the expertise to do what I think is pretty low level work in terms of managing a fairly simple, um, website, who is retired? And it's an easy enough thing that they can actually do remotely. And, um, perhaps, I know nobody's volunteering, but if they had names they wanted to shoot to me or to you, we could figure out if there's some people who would be willing to make the commitment to, so they're not in the city, right? Or teaching a class or something at the time that everything crashes and you need a warm body to fix it.
Whatever, and I'm not going to get this completely right because I've only heard it once from our IT director, whatever the platform was or the language was that we used, that got used to put this together is now not the norm. Matter of fact, it's basically only written in Russian. And so, it's not something that's easily manipulated by your average computer wonk or whatever. It's, it's, it's somewhat specialized and it's not easy to do, so I'm, I'm not trying to be negative about it. I'm just saying it's not a straight forward. Or not necessarily everybody's going to be able to do it, so why, why, we have to figure it out.
I think you'd be surprised at the depth of talent.
I'm sure I'm not, I'm just saying it's not as, it's more complicated than it seems.
It could be that they go in and they figure out that it's something that maybe they can piece together or maybe they can't. But if they can't, maybe they can come up with a new platform.
It's not a deal killer.
Well, let's put the word out.
Oh, I'm just saying, I, this has nothing to, no offense, but this doesn't have anything to do with your parade.
Why don't we put the word out, somebody has, if somebody wants an interest in helping out with our website technology.
We can put something on the homepage says we're looking for volunteers. I would strongly suggest you put something out on Facebook, the town's Norfolk page saying, hey, you know, here's how you get an application so we can gather them the week of New Year's to have them available for you on the seventh.
Right, okay.
Okay, so you're going to make that decision on the seventh, is that it, for the committee?
Correct.
Okay.
How big a committee do you want?
Again, I won't be.
How big a committee do you want?
Close, but is, many, what do you, what do you feel you'd like for a committee? Five, seven? People? Ten?
You're asking me questions?
How much of donation do they have to make to join?
Works both ways, isn't it great? Put you on the spot, Paul. Because Blithe has to know how many to present to the board. Obviously, she's going to give us names, so I don't have an idea.
Knowing, uh, how many people want to volunteer for things, um, I'm not sure the, you know, any number I would quote, you know, maybe a committee of three, I mean, you know.
Maybe a not to exceed.
Not to exceed, you know, three, yeah, not to exceed, not to exceed three, or, yeah, I mean, the committee is just there to.
Just doesn't want to give a number.
Yeah, to do all the work, right?
Right.
You know, that's all the committee's there for, you know, I mean, we just need to coordinate it, that's all, you know, but.
So maybe not to exceed of seven members? How's that?
Sure.
I'll give you all the names that we get.
If we all, if we get more than seven, we'll have to really do our work.
You might want to put a filter on the website.
Eat my shoe.
So it doesn't get overburdened.
Good.
I don't mean to be facetious.
We understand. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks for coming in.
So if I can make one more comment on my issue. Um, in a conversation I've had with Blithe and with Kevin, I, I agree with them that you really don't want to depend on volunteers for potential emergency things. I mean, if people sign up and, and volunteer, that does not mean that they're available on call twenty-four by seven. And, and you, you know, it would be a mistake to rely on volunteers for things that were critical in that sense. I do think that, um, Cece was, was right that, um, you know, whether the explanation is in Russian or in English or in Chinese, HTML is HTML is HTML. And, you know, it, somebody should be able to figure out whether they can edit the HTML or not pretty easily. And I, I agree with Cece's assessment, it's really not a complicated thing.
I love when the MIT professor agrees with me that something's not complicated as it relates to computers, makes me feel so smart.
Thanks, David.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right. So if we have any volunteers out there who want to, uh, help us out, send your information to either Cece or Blithe. How's that? Okay. Please consider approval of the following warrants. I move that the board approve the following warrants. Twelve six, two thousand nineteen, the amount is seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. I move that the board approve the following warrant, twelve ten, two thousand nineteen, the amount of two hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents. And then I move that the board approve the following warrant on twelve ten, in the amount of two thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Please consider approval and release of the regular and executive session minutes. And, uh, we have the motion to, the board to move to approve the minutes of April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, and November twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, regular meetings.
We've made a significant effort, I haven't, I, I'm going to give all the credit to Judith and Nancy to, um, go back and make sure that all of the meetings. and Nancy to go back and make sure that all of the meetings that were posted have minutes for them. The April 30th ones were a slight correction from the last meeting where Mr. Talon was incorrectly referred to, that's corrected, and then November 21st is the first time you're seeing those. The second motion are minutes from executive sessions that you've already approved and determined could be released, so they can be done in open session. They both need to be approved and released, I'm sorry, and then the last are minutes that were previously approved in executive session and the matter is closed, say run and gun, prior union contracts, and these all can be released. So, these are all the ones we want you to do in open session.
Correct.
And then we have four sets of minutes that need to be approved that in executive session, they're not ready to be released, and that's what the executive session is for.
Okay, so do you want to approve these in three motions as--
Yes, please.
Okay, so I first, I stated the first one, do we have a second for the--
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I move that the board approve and release the minutes of September 18th, 2018, set two of two, October 2nd, 2018, March 19th, 2019, executive session meetings.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that the board release the following sets of previously approved executive session minutes, February 6th, 2018, May 24th, 2018, June 26th, 2018, July 24th, 2018, August 14th, 2018, September 18th, 2018, set one of two, December 17th, 2018, February 4th, 2019, April 16th, 2019.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Before we go into executive session, there were two items I just wanted to update the board on if you wouldn't mind.
We'll let you, we'll start with those, sure.
Sure, first is I'm handing out a memo that is from the building department. This was in relation to the matter brought up by Mr. Denver at the last board meeting, his concerns about the contractors who have, he's aware of that do not want to do work in Norfolk because of the stringency of what we require. Basically, what the memo says is that, you know, we are aware that there are some contractors who don't choose to do work in town and we're also aware of contractors who do very good work in town and we attribute it to a couple of things. One is that the code is, is very difficult. It has gotten a lot harder over the years to design a system that meets the state requirements and the state doesn't provide necessarily training to contractors to teach them how to do it. And so, we recognize and we know from other communities that there are situations where contractors are, would prefer to work in towns where they don't require, they're not as stringent on making sure all the paperwork is filled out and the calculations are done correctly, and others where they are. I can tell you, I'm personally going through this issue, finishing up a house I'm building in another community and the town is, is holding us to those requirements and, and the contractor is, you know, is finding that challenging. What he's done is outlined the various areas of the code that are, are required, it's not because of the stretch energy code that the town passed a couple of years ago, this is just state law, that we follow and what those require. So, in any situation, whether it's HVAC or otherwise, we are always more than happy to meet with contractors and help them, not do the work for them, but help them understand what they need to do to be compliant and also to meet with residents who are frustrated if they are having trouble getting a contractor to meet the requirement. But what we, what's difficult is being, is situations where someone chooses to go to a community that maybe isn't upholding the rules and that's something, I just don't think we want to be in a situation where we're choosing to enforce some building codes and not others, so just wanted to bring you up to Dan, I shared a copy of this with Mr. Denver as he left the room because he's the one that brought it up last week and I sent it to Mr. Calcut earlier today. So, that's information I want to share with you. On a separate matter, there was a concern by a resident about the color of his hot water in his home that was a fairly popular topic on Facebook in the last couple of weeks. We did complete that, that testing has been done and the results were that, we sent our own company do the testing, the same protocol we use to test town water at the wellhead sites and what they found was that manganese levels were higher than the standard, but not what would be considered a violation by the DEP and not something that the DEP would require us to do any additional work to address and that sodium levels were higher than the, the standard, but that it is in line with the results that we've had at the Spruce Road well since it's been online and we use sodium in Norfolk to help balance pH in the water. So, on one level, it's creating a good thing, it's balancing that, that water quality, but at the same time, it comes, you know, in order to do so, it comes in at higher, but again, it's not something the DEP requires us to do something about. And I, so I'd say to people, please look at our website, we've taken some time to post a lot of good information about if, if you're having cold water come out of your tap clear and water that's coming out of your, say your bathtub and it's discolored, it's likely that heating that water is causing it to turn color. And what we actually recommend is for people to have their, their hot water tank cleaned because over time it can, manganese can build up and it can discolor when it's heated and it's a very, you know, it's maybe not simple to get a plumber to your house, but it's a fairly inexpensive fix. I had that happen in my own home in another community, I haven't been in well water, but once I got in the, in the habit of having it cleaned every year, over time it went away. And so, we wouldn't want to see residents spend a lot of money on, let's say, a whole house filtration system if there's a simple fix that's available to them. And we could help talk people through that and help them think about those things if they have questions. And I'll also say the complete opposite end of the spectrum is having the town invest in putting in a full filtration plant, that according to our engineers, that likely for the two well fields we have now and we're adding a third, could easily be over $10 million. And so, while we appreciate people's concern about discolored water, there are ways to do it in a way that's cost effective for all our rate payers and individual homeowner. So, we want to just get the word out, things are, they're not unsafe, they're not out of line with what they need to be per state regulations and we'd like to be able to talk with people if they have questions, so we can help them figure out what might be the right solution for them.
Did you say that's going to be out on the website?
It already is.
It is out on the website.
There are already a couple of posts that happened over Thanksgiving and the week after that, hey, hey, if you're experiencing brown water, these are the things you can do, but I just wanted to alert you that our, our testing came back--
No, I said, is the testing on the website?
The actual testing from that locate, that home is not on the website.
Okay.
But the state requires, we put out the water quality tests once a year. I mean, we do, we're doing testing depending, I think the actual testing, how often we have to test and for what is on there, the results each time are not what's on there. We, we can provide them to someone if they asked, but it's not a, because it's a public record, but it's not something that, you know, it's fairly stand, it's fairly consistent every time tests are done.
Yeah, okay, good. I don't want to belabor the letter from the building department, but I think it says, he says is, that contractors don't want to work in Norfolk because we uphold the state building code. I don't think Mr. Denver, what he had said was, I think he said the difficulty with working with the department, now you have assured us the department's going to work with these people.
Sure.
So, I don't think it was that they were complaining about that Norfolk requires the state building code to be upheld and other communities don't, I think the, every community in the state requires the state building code be upheld, it was the level of service they're getting or the level of service they're not getting that was, that is causing contractors not to want to work in this town except for, for a premium. So, I think, but that's something you're addressing, I think separately, and I think that's, that's part of this, I think, I don't know if he, maybe he wrote it without, without that understanding, but I think, I think that should be clarified, isn't it, other towns are not making people, you know, building codes, certainly they are.
I can assure you some are not.
Well--
In terms of, this is a particularly, it's not completely well understood by everybody, it takes a lot more work. My own HVAC contractor said, I feel like I need to be an engineer to meet these requirements now, it's very difficult and there's forms to be filled out, it's not a simple, I think we need this much capacity to, for a house of this size to heat it or cool it, it's a lot more difficult. The outcome is for, for a resident is likely their house is more efficient and costs less to run, but it's not easy to comply and so, we're trying to, we would like to help contractors and we'd like to help residents understand it.
Sure.
So, we'll keep working on that.
Good. And then on one other note, and she's going to hear this a lot, is I guess Chris Gleason is going to be retiring at the end of this year, so this will probably be her last select board meeting with us. So, Chris, can you come out for a moment, out of your humble booth, you're just going to wave at us through the window?
See one hand, see one hand.
I think on behalf of the select board and on behalf of, I think, Kevin as well as Cece, we certainly appreciate all your efforts to the select board and your support of the cable TV and the town of Norfolk, so thank you very much, Chris, and we wish you the best, I'm sure you'll be hearing this more, I know tomorrow night you'll be behind the scenes there at the zoning board meeting, so you'll again hear this, your praises sung again tomorrow night, but thank you very much for all your help over the years. With that--
I have two water comments--
Sure.
If I may make them, so one thing is I think that what the town posts with respect to the results of testing meets the state requirements for timeliness, but the state requirements are, you know, like a year late, that is, the testing is done and the requirement for the annual report is approximately a year later, so it would be useful, though not legally required, if the town could more promptly report the test results. And the second thing I wanted to mention is I do have a whole house filter at home and when I change the filter and look at what's in the, the sump, it looks like black mud, this is cold water coming in and, and I understand that, that having a filtration plant would be very expensive, but I do want to let you know that it is not just water that's been heated, it's water that, town water entering the house through the combination of manganese, magnesium?
Magnesium.
And--
Magnesium.
Magnesium, thank you, and, and other chemicals, I mean, I had a discussion about this with Bob McGee and it, it forms this stuff that I can only call mud and, and it's not attractive to understand that that's the water coming into the house.
Thank you, okay. I move that the board enter into executive session under MGL, chapter 30, subsection 21A7, to comply with the general laws of the purpose and reviews and approval of the executive session minutes and whether those minutes should be released in open session and invite our town administrator, Blithe Robinson, and executive secretary, Judith Lozardo, to participate.
Chapter 30A.
Did I, what did I say?
You forgot, 30.
I said 30, thank you, 38?
I'm here for you, Chris.
I appreciate it.
Detail oriented.
I appreciate it.
Second.
And you, and you voting?
Oh, and I'll vote Carolyn Van Tine, aye.
Correct, Christopher Weider, aye. We will enter into executive session, we will be coming back into open session to close out the--
Just, just adjourn.
Just to adjourn.
Just to adjourn, thank you very much.
Thank you all.